Good morning. It is nine o'clock, Monday, August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're in the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners. For this morning's meeting of the code enforcement workshop. Today's agenda, all actions to be taken on items unless otherwise posted. No action to be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off. During the meeting, the board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined or for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners, a special meeting. All or some board of commission. Commission members may elect to call in to this meeting. The public can accept access this meeting at the above address. Roll call today. We have Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Hockaday in chambers. And Commissioner Henderson called in earlier and said he would be, okay, and he just came on. He is on Zoom. So item one is taken care of. Item two, pledge of allegiance. If I could have Commissioner Keller lead us in the pledge, please.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under our.
Thank you. Item three, public participation. Action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. Is anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, but may be returned to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment. After discussions of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. So do I have any public comment to start off this morning?
My name is Jim Richards. I live on the rear Mister Pride down by. Where Jimmy is. Mike, it sounds a little bit different this morning.
Excuse me, could you go ahead and sign in? And full name, please.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, my concern today is is a little bit beyond possibly values. It really goes to health and welfare of the area. We have some, we have an abandoned house that is overgrown, I mean tremendously overgrown. And we have people that's not taking care of their properties. And my fear is that as the weather starts changing and all this stuff's drying up, we're going to have a real bad fire issue. If something gets on fire out there and the wind starts, it's going to take out a whole lot of houses. And I would like to see a little bit of enforcement done on property caretaker. And that's my concern today. Thank you.
Everybody else in chambers, anybody online? Doesn't look like it. Okay. For possible action review and adoption of agenda. A very short agenda here. Do I have any comment on the agenda from the commissioners? Any comment from the public? Then if there's no comment, I'll look for motion on the agenda.
I move to the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, second. A motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson, or I mean Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Okay, I have a five zero. Item five, workshop. A workshop with the Lyon County Board of Commissioners to review and discuss current code enforcement regulations and processes and potential amendments to both. No action will be taken. So, Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Lewis Carriola, Community Development Director, presenting. Before I get started, I did want to acknowledge and thank County Manager, District Attorney Ry, Sheriff's Office, in particular, Commander Powell, and then our code enforcement officer, Michael Johnson. We're all here today to contribute to any of the commentary that might require their input. So code enforcement workshop, we're here because of course, we recognize that code enforcement could potentially function a little bit better in Lyon County. Some of the commissioners, I'm sure, here today have received a number of complaints from their communities, staff, commutes to office, many of us, and we can see that the problems that aren't being addressed despite the efforts of community development and code enforcement. So as part of introduction here, just wanted to point out, you know, Lyon County experiences similar issues as other rural jurisdictions. Most notably, and I think the one that everyone always notices, junk, garbage, construction waste, old vehicles on properties, people living in uninhabitable buildings or structures, even even ones that have been red tagged, has been pointed out in public comment already this morning. People living in RVs and camping on public and private properties. And I point out public lands here because Lyon County, of course, shares so much of our boundary with public lands that we are an attractive place to be accessing public lands. So the lure of the public lands actually sometimes affects Lyon County boundaries. I was surprised to learn that there was a term for this. Maybe you already knew about boondockers. I found that to be people who live on public lands or are not living in an RV appropriately. We have squatters, people who are living on properties without the authority of the property owner. Sometimes when we're seeking to address types of situations like this, assessors might have an old owner who's deceased. Or maybe someone has inherited the property. They're still going through that property transition. And we're sending out letters. We're trying to contact a chain of custody and ownership that is difficult to pin down. So there are some challenges sometimes in the types of code enforcement issues we're trying to address. But of course, when it comes to the public, they're just seeing that things aren't addressed in what they assume to be a timely manner. Going on to some of the more common issues, we see no business licenses for functioning businesses. Those are typically reported, some, you know, by neighbors. Sometimes their code enforcement officer or some other means of inspection might identify that, like the fire district, for instance. Improper zoning for a land use for the type of use that's occurring on the property or lack of a zoning entitlement. That one seems pretty self-explanatory. Maybe you're conducting one. One might be conducting a use that requires a special use permit without that entitlement. Legal connections of utilities or lack of proper utilities. We have had instances where people have had electricity, for instance, turned on at a property without the proper authorization from the county. This is particularly troubling if there's a substandard structure, of course, because then there's a fire hazard. Construction without building permits, that is probably something that every day, every place with code enforcement or any place that issues building permits, which everywhere experiences. That one, again, somewhat self-explanatory. Our code and most code enforcement regulations do talk about public nuisances. Public nuisance as a term doesn't seem that ominous. However, when they become attractive nuisances, when we have structures that are not well kept, that are substandard and that aren't secure, the most obvious concern is children getting into these places and then somehow suffering injury. And that's what this this final comment here in the slide is meant to kind of convey. Public nuisances can become, public nuisances can become an actual threat, public health and safety. You know, unnecessarily taking up the time of the sheriff's office, maybe not unnecessarily, but we don't want to be in this situation looking forward. Throughout this presentation, I'm going to kind of keep trying to stress this, that the goal of code enforcement is compliance with our code. We're not trying to be overly overly regulatory. We're not trying to violate people's property rights. No proposed amendment or change to our process is going to be focused on the collection of fines. We're not trying to start assessing penalties and acquiring property. That's not our goal. Our goal is compliance with code and public health and safety. We definitely don't want to keep having to engage the sheriff's office or the district attorney. We'd like to be able to have a better mechanism in community development to handle code enforcement issues. Before we get rolling, I'm kind of a description of how our current process works and then some staff suggestions moving forward for amendment. I did want to call out some of some of the success of our current system. As many people I'm sure recognize, you know, the small percentage of issues cause the large percentage of complaints. Code enforcement is largely almost entirely complaint driven. And of course, Officer Johnson receives many complaints about the same properties. So our statistics demonstrate that about eighty percent of our cases are closed. The next bullet point here, about thirty cases being opened and closed with two hundred moving forward every year. I know the math there doesn't quite work out. The reason being that there are cases that just take much longer. So we could have a case open in January of twenty-two and it doesn't close till June of twenty-three. So there's sort of a revolving set of numbers and cases. Officer Johnson's been here for about three years, inherited some cases, some are just sort of slowly moving towards compliance and we're striving, of course, to close as many as we can. But the truth of the matter is, we need to have a recognized distinction between our expectations for each property. In other words, one property's owner's champ has different challenges than others as far as compliance. Wanted to show here a few images of code enforcement success, and some of them are very easy to recognize. So here we have a photo from October of two thousand and twenty, and then we have August of two thousand and twenty-three. So that's all right. That is a wonderful success, right? Even if someone drove by that and didn't think, well, maybe they should trim the grass. We have to be reasonable about what our expectations are for the maintenance of some of these properties. Here's another one where code enforcement success seems somewhat evident, right? It's a lot of material, junk, and vehicles, and now they're cleaned up. This slide, unfortunately, I think demonstrates more of the reality of code enforcement work. And that is that that success in code enforcement is something that has to we need to recognize it takes time. Success is incremental, requires patience. And if a property owner or tenants or whomever code enforcement is dealing with, it's moving in the right direction, then we have to recognize that this is going to take time. And the neighbors might not be thrilled about the fact that it's going to take another four months, but we need to recognize it takes time and money sometimes to move materials like old appliances and concrete off of a property. So it is something I wanted to stress here that, you know, even if we move forward with amendments and we come up with the with the greatest code enforcement code in the region, it's still going to require some measure of patience. Code enforcement work often involves multiple violations on the same property. In this case, it would seem evident that maybe that building in the back, it doesn't look structurally all that sound. But the more important issue is the garbage. So we've cleaned up that garbage, but that building itself might still be something of an issue. Staff works with property owners to prioritize which which violation needs to be cleaned up first. So Officer Johnson, again, I I think he has demonstrated great patience and real acumen in working with people towards a common goal. And that is, let's incrementally move through these violations at the appropriate pace and address the most serious violation first. Oh, you can't really see the the full slide here, but thank you. This is a term I I kind of coined it myself. Some years ago, I did work as a code enforcement officer for a number of years, or did code enforcement work in different capacities. And violation creep was sort of tongue in cheek about an individual, but also demonstration of what happens on property. So we're lucky now to have the kind of digital imagery that past code enforcement officers wouldn't have had. So here we have a site in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fifteen. Those are tires starting to build up, being delivered to a property two thousand and twenty. So, you know, this is truckloads of tires being dropped off to a rural property. Staff doesn't find out about this situation until recently, say, twenty-one or twenty-two. And now we have truckloads of tires that wasn't too long ago, there were virtually none. So when we're dealing with a property like this, what are reasonable expectations for cleanup, right? It took maybe seven years for it to get this way. Well, seven years to clean it up, that might not be reasonable. But four or five might be. So, you know, we need to have, in my opinion, a better structure for how to address larger code enforcement issues like this that aren't a simple cleanup. It's not just going out and trimming some weeds or getting a building permit or just stopping by with one dump truck. The most important thing I believe, community development has believed in our discussions, is that we can address property owners as opposed sometimes to tenants and get their attention. So I'm going to now kind of run through some of our issues as staff has been able to identify them in our process and in our code. There are some recommendations within the the coming slides and then sort of a suggested new process. So first, just sort of a general statement, Lyon County is large, rural and suburban, growing and adjacent to public lands. I kind, I recently mentioned or previously mentioned here that, you know, adjacency to public lands does create some issues for Lyon County. It's wonderful for recreation, but it also brings some folks who maybe don't have the resources to rent somewhere. So they're coming through Lyon County and sometimes affecting Lyon County directly. When we're addressing code enforcement through community development, we've got one code enforcement officer, and he's got one vehicle and one phone. He's got a little bit of administrative support within the community development structure, and I try to assist as I'm able to. But outside of that, he's managing these cases largely himself. When we have to engage Commander Powell or the District Attorney's Office, you know, at that point, we've done what we can administratively or believe we have. And by the time we're bringing in sort of the heavy hitters for code enforcement, we're moving right into sort of the more criminal side of code enforcement as opposed to addressing it administratively, well, then we've already spent a lot of time and much of our resources. Sometimes, unfortunately, by the time we get to the sheriff's office or by the time we get to the district attorney's office for, you know, assistance and resolution, the 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 record hasn't been compiled with that intent. In other words, we haven't been engaging these violators repeatedly with the intent of going to the district attorney office, district attorney's office and creating a record to go to court. We haven't gone forward with the intent to bring it to the sheriff's office. So I think, again, there's an opportunity for us to have a cleaner process, maybe with a longer term in mind, even if we don't want to, right? We want to address these items administratively. We don't want to have to to help escalate these. But again, we'll get into some of the recommendations here, notably Title Six and some in Title Fifteen are where staff is identifying places where our code can be amended. So as far as the fundamentals, I'm sorry, I'll slow down. I know I speak quickly. So if there's any questions, open to pausing at any time.
Question? I'll kind of leave it up to Mr. Carriola. If he wants to take a pause and ask a question over what you've covered, I think that would probably work.
Yeah, I think that's why, before I jump into fundamentals, I've kind of gone through my introduction. So yes, I think that's good.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
On that tires, on that violation period?
Yes.
They building with the tires or what was the reason for that?
We haven't quite figured that out. I think there are some romanticized versions of creating bunkers out in Arizona using tires. I'm not sure how you do that on a flat landscape. So I don't know that we've identified the intent.
I was just curious if that's a lot of that.
I agree, sir.
Well, besides the tires, a lot of the stuff, the tires just stand out. So that's why I. Thank you.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, real quick. That's not the only property that we have with a lot of tires, as I'm sure you're aware. There's, but there's a few of them around. Just to address the format, this is set up as a workshop, so it's meant to be a little bit more open format. So questions and whatnot are more than appropriate. You know, the purpose of today's meeting, it's some discussion on on code enforcement.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday and Mr. Haskins. Appreciate that. Ms. Carriola, if you're going to cover some of this later, just say, well, I'll get, we'll get to that. All right, it won't, we will not hurt my feeling. All right, so construction without a building permit, you touched on that just a little bit. I'm guessing public reporting is probably the number one source to find this out. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is.
And is that reporting a confidential process?
Yes, so it is actually right on this slide, on the left slide.
Right.
Our.
So I guess my my point is, do is that made aware when to, I mean, how does the general public know that that, because there may be some fear in reporting because they don't want, they don't want to be chastised or come after and retribution of some sort. Is that well published that it's confidential?
So the the online portal for submitting an electronic complaint, I believe, does note that it's anonymous. Officer Johnson. But you don't share that. So we could, I suppose, maybe that's something we could stress on the website.
Right, or even just put up poster up maybe in the post offices. I don't know that it's perfectly, I don't know, just something. I don't know. I I I I get that. And then how was the, we heard from public participation earlier? How was the relationship with the county and cities regarding properties bordering each other? I know we hear about vehicles entering this some of these properties, and that may be in the city ground, and then all of a sudden the residents or the buildings may be on county ground or vice versa. How does, how are we working together and what kind of jurisdiction issues is, I mean, I don't, I don't fully understand all of that.
I I'll be honest, I personally, in the, we're coming up on six months in this position, I have not had opportunities to reach out and have those correspondents, you know, if Officer Johnson has some of those issues. If we are contacted by the city for any number of reasons, we're always going to try and investigate. We're partners in our region, of course. But I have not had formal contact. So I'm happy after this workshop, we move forward to start.
I was just wondering if that if that caused some of the any issues or not. I'm not saying it did. I'm just, I'm not going to sit here and assume anything today. And then just by looking at some of your pictures, you got to almost believe that some of these properties are linked to some sort of mental health issue. Maybe it's lack of money or health issues linking their abilities to clean it up. And then just versus some of these people just being complete slobs. And I guess how do, you've got to use your discretion, I'm sure, on some of that, but but or they're obviously the slob, we need to probably be a little more aggressive with the mental health. Do we involve Ms. Holmes and her department and?
Yes, sir, we do. The sheriff's office, of course, is also aware of those those situations of mental health. We, when appropriate, will try and engage Ms. Holmes to see if there are opportunities to help folks. We recently had a situation where there was an anonymous complaint about people living in an RV. It's unfortunately a relatively common occurrence of complaint. In this case, though, there were children involved. So we were able to reach out to Ms. Holmes, and she then was able to find a means of getting the children safe residency somewhere else, right? I mean, I I recall the folks being being personally assisted, the young family.
Right on.
So we are we are cognizant of that. I know Officer Johnson, again, does have to make some of those those judgments himself, and then often consults me to see what level of 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 seat resolution we're going to pursue. You know, the District Attorney's Office would prefer, I think, that we have better documentation for some of these items, but sometimes it needs to be a phone call.
Right. And then just, let's just take this picture, for example, and I'm just going to maybe I'm looking through this with the long lens, wrong lens. So I'm using, I'm bouncing what I see off of you, and you could tell me if I'm full of it or not, all right?
Okay, sure.
So what I see there is the garbage in the front pile is absolutely unacceptable, no matter who or what's going on. If we were to start going after buildings, though, that are in the back of that, you're going to have, there's probably fifteen thousand of those in Lyon County. So, and that was probably there before any neighbors moved in that structure. So I would think that it would be almost impossible to go after something that's been there that long and say that there's a problem with it, I guess, unless there's a fire danger or something. But but the garbage is obviously one hundred percent unacceptable. So I don't, that's what I see. Maybe I'm wrong. So straighten me out.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Yeah, so the building, so Lyon County doesn't have a property maintenance code. Some counties do, we don't, and it, you know, it would be kind of tricky, I think, to implement. You know, so really, we'd be looking at it, you know, if the structure was safe. You know, in this case, you know, I don't think anybody is living in it. It looks like it might be an outbuilding, but I'm not sure. Michael might know, but, you know, I mean, really, we'd have to kind of take a look at the situation and determine what's safe there or not.
Right. And I'm not trying to digress, just as we go through pictures today and go through conversation, I want to know how to maybe look at and view this stuff, so.
Absolutely. You know, I'll give you an example. I mean, so we get we get some we get some, you know, requests about broken windows or whatnot, complaints about that type of thing. And that's not probably something that we're going to address as a code enforcement thing, just because, like I said, we don't have a property maintenance code. There's nothing, so you have to have
Right.
I see the district attorney is here, so he might have something.
Michael Johnson, code enforcement. That particular case, somebody complained about people living in RVs and trash and debris. So then I went to the people. They did get the people off the property that were living in the RV, and then they did clean up all the trash. So that was they're still in the process of cleaning up the property as a whole, but that's what the complaint was about. It never discussed the building.
Okay.
It was.
It seemed like that came up, though, that the priority or the list of priorities, it seemed like when we first saw that slide, it was presented as priorities of cleaning up. And obviously, I totally agree with code enforcement and Mr. Carriola that the pile, whatever that is, needed to go first, so.
It says like, you know, multiple violations. So what you get is a code enforcement case, and it's junk vehicles, trash and debris, people living in RV. So it's really one case, but there's three different things that are going on. So as you guys get those reports, you get a report of the junk vehicles and trash and debris and living in an RV, but yet it was really just one case in that particular one, a property.
Andrew Haskin for the record. Andrew Haskin for the record, and I and I think, you know, in talking about priorities, I think if somebody had been living there, that would have changed the priority.
Right.
Cause you know, that, uh, just looking from this picture, it doesn't really look like that's probably. Safe to inhabit, but um.
Right.
You know, be given that it wasn't occupied and I don't, again, I can't tell if it's an outbuilding or not, kind of looks like it is, but.
All right, thank you.
Steve Wright District Attorney, uh, following up on Commissioner Jacobson's question. I think as you go through this discussion, uh, some of the examples are pretty obvious. But Michael Johnson does a good job uh using discretion, you know, not responding to every complaint. He he takes a look at things and very seldom is he going after structures that, like you said, have existed for a long time. Sheds and that sort of thing, they deteriorate over time, he's not sending complaints. Certainly to the DA's office that there's a shed that's falling down.
Yeah, I would hold, I mean, just from looking at this, I don't. If I offend someone by this or not, it doesn't matter, but. I would agree, if they clean that up, that shed looks like it's been there for quite a while, they're not living in it, so. They're using it maybe for goats or whatever, I don't know, let them use it.
Yeah, and I think that's typically what happens. The uh, the one other thing I just want to say is to go through the discussion and Lewis touched on this. Is all these things are sort of a multifaceted approach, we're talking about code enforcement. Coming at that angle, but certainly early on in these cases, you know, we encourage. Uh, if it is a human services issue, that human services get involved, maybe the person's elderly. Just not able to do it or whatever, so trying to provide help for that sort of thing, maybe it's a mental health or physical issue, something like that. And then getting, identifying cases that are law enforcement, that's challenging. But uh certainly, we've had great cooperation with the sheriff's office, getting involved in those cases. Uh, because you don't want Michael going into a situation could be dangerous or whatever.
Right on.
So uh, it is that multifaceted approach, uh, Lewis will touch on that again, but uh, today's talking mainly about the code enforcement side.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday, and thank you for those responses. So I see. Mr. Henderson, Commissioner Henderson's hand is up as well.
Uh, I had Commissioner Keller first and then Commissioner, no, okay, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions, actually. Um, I'm curious about the anonymous part of the complaints. Is there a carve out in the public records law that that keeps that, that complaint is confidential?
Apologies, Commissioner Henderson, I don't know that answer. I'm gonna defer to the district attorney.
Steve Wright District Attorney, uh, there's not a carve out in the public records law that keeps that confidential. The other piece that's important about that is one of the processes we've used for many years. Uh, which Mike or Lewis will talk about a little bit today is transfer to the DA's office for a criminal prosecution. And when you have a criminal prosecution, your rights change as a defendant, due process, that sort of thing, you're entitled to know who witnesses are and that. And that sort of thing, so that can be a challenge with that process to keeping that person confidential. The result, they want to remain confidential, the criminal prosecution is not a likely uh likely outcome. Doesn't mean that you fix the issue, uh, but the, you know, there is. People make complaints, we try to keep it confidential, there's no hundred percent guarantee on that, though.
Yeah, so so if somebody ha- is notified that there's a complaint filed against them. They could do a public records request to find out who made the complaint, is that correct?
Uh, Steve Wright DA, they can make a public records request, I can tell you, though, code enforcement does not always have that information. Uh, it may be anonymous, it could be just a phone number or something like that. Um, but yeah, they could make the request and it'll uh likely would have to be turned over as a part of a public records request.
Okay, good, and then uh another topic I I want to touch on briefly, you're talking about. Um, you know, we have technology now, so we get aerial, we can get aerial photos. Are we flying drones over people's house, or can you tell me how that houses or how the houses, how does that work?
Uh, Louis Carriola, uh. Commissioner Henderson, we we don't fly drones specifically for code enforcement, sir. Uh, we do use the pictometry software from the assessor's office. So those images you saw uh came from um the platform used by the assessor, so we have. Better, essentially better resolution uh from aerial um photos. But it's not intended just for code enforcement, no, sir.
That's just kind of a slippery slope to me. All right, tha- thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything further? Right?
Just uh, or one, I just thought of some, um. I mean, we just had a police officer from Pyramid Lake get uh with murder, um. I would think that if there's an issue of officer safety or code enforcement safety. A drone would be an absolutely brilliant use. To check on some of this rather than put themselves in harm's way, so I guess I would, I would be uh. I would be all for adding um. That they're able to use a drone, I'm sorry, but fly over my house anytime, take all pictures you want.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, so um u- using a drone probably wouldn't, wouldn't be able to. We probably would not be able to do that, I mean, so this is satellite imagery that um. The pictometry, like Louis said, it's a little bit higher resolution than say like the free satellite imagery that you get from Google Earth, but. Anybody can go and look this up. With drone footage, I I believe, then I'd have to. For to the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office, but I'm pretty sure you would need a warrant for um flying a drone over somebody's property. So, yeah. So we, yeah, we we don't use that for code enforcement.
And we don't.
And and code enforcement doesn't.
Anything further? All right, we'll move on.
Okay, so we'll pick up here um at our current process fundamentals. Um, starting with complaints, so um most of them come online or via email uh to Officer Johnson or through our electronic. Uh, platform Sage, uh, phone calls, often, of course, um, again, directed to Officer Johnson. Uh, sometimes we do have folks come to the front counter. Uh, as we've already discussed, anonymous here might not have been a full um picture description. Uh, so initially, yes, items can be anonymous, and as the district attorney pointed out. Um, sometimes we do just receive completely anonymous complaints, so even in in the event of a. Of a public records request, there wouldn't be much for us to to actually divulge. Um, the code enforcement officer, uh, his first step is to verify this complaint, it's already been mentioned. Uh, today, he he's not going to respond to, you know, Bob really hates Mark next door kind of complaints. He's going to create a file, once he's he's verified that uh complaint appears to be legitimate. Um, he might look through our records and see if there's an old file. He has regular routes where he he gets through the county, um, so. Uh, I know, you know, it might take until next Thursday when he's going to Silver Springs again. Um, but but Michael does go out, verify, and then create a file for these complaints. Uh, the initial step now is to write a letter uh mentioning both the type of complaint. Uh, as well as um maybe the violation, sort of the code section, uh, that is. Looks to be uh violated, uh. If we don't get a response, he's sending follow up letters, um, you can try and make phone calls. We kind of get stuck in that little loop currently. Where uh the letters go out and request a thirty day uh response and it doesn't come, so we send another one. Um, or we have some sort of unsatisfactory communications where where resolution. Might be promised and one month later, nothing's happened, two months later, nothing's happened, and we're we're kind of sending letters. Uh, at that point, we consider elevating this, this spot, such a file. Might end up at the district attorney's office or to the sheriffs, uh, as I mentioned earlier, if we've been writing letters. Thinking we're going to get an administrative resolution, sometimes we haven't. Written those letters in a format that is going to assist the district attorney if they do have to go to court. Um, so that's something we're already actively working on, is kind of changing those formats with that situation in mind. We don't really want to take up the sheriff's office time, um, but of course, as again, also previously mentioned, if there's any criminal element. Identified, then we're going to bring in the sheriffs immediately. But again, if if we haven't been. Writing letters or making communications or keeping logs with the intent of turning this into a criminal case. Uh, sometimes the 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 case uh or the file isn't really prepared to get through the prosecution of that. So that's where, in the bottom of that resolution area, I have a close with a question mark. Um, that's entirely unsatisfactory to everyone involved, when we've spent all this time. And we maybe get all the way to the court or get to the sheriff's office and we don't get the resolution we wanted. The the best case in the solution is the or is at the top there, where we we, yes, we get a resolution, people respond, or we make an agreement. Right, we have a compliance schedule, um, that that's actually probably the most common case, is where we make agreements between. Code enforcement and the property owners or the or whomever is responsible for the violations. And we check on them every month or however long that that schedule is. Some of the process, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Are you gonna have a slide here that shows that complaint form at all? That I'm from the slide before that, the one that people actually fill out.
Oh, no, I I don't have that.
Is it just a one page thing?
Af- after we get through the presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at it to see if we're gonna offer improvements and stuff, I'd like to see what that form looked like.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I have a question, is there some sort of code enforcement software that could assist him with that cumbersome part of. Tracking the timelines and when to write another letter and kind of recording the steps in the process that would make it easier to. Forward that information to the district attorney?
Uh, thank you for that question, Mr. Hendricks, I I think, uh, you know, currently we we use Sage. Um, which is what we also use for building and we're we're moving towards um full implementation for the planning department as well. I I I think Sage has some tools for record keeping, I don't know that at this point with one code enforcement officer. We've been able to identify anything that would make it much more efficient. That's not to say that we can't look at that, and I'll make a note of that, as part of our proof process, we are updating the letter formats. And I think there's probably a great opportunity to use the software as it is. I I'll also, you know, freely admit that I've not been um, you know, looking for code enforcement specific software. Um, but I'm sure the capability exists there with this intent, I will look into that as part of any proposed amendments.
Any further question?
No, okay.
Okay, so uh, just picking up on some of these process challenges, I've already kind of alluded to a number of them. You know, the community development department, DA's office, sheriff's office, we, you know, we'd like to produce more success. Um, none of us like to spend time and not get the resolution we're seeking. Small percentage of non-responses in difficult cases do present the large percent of the issues, the phone calls, the follow ups. Um, hours of record keeping, uh, maybe there is an opportunity here to start using software to to make that process a little more efficient. I would agree with you that sending out letters repeatedly is probably not the best way to spend limited resources. And that's where we're hoping to to use potential amendments here to both our process and to our our uh ordinances. To to make us more effective, to to give us better tools to target the most difficult code enforcement cases. Um, I, there's a lot of language on this slide, but I I did want to kind of just pull out some of the highlights that. Uh, from our current code and title six that that uh. Defines what a nuisance is, so we're talking about buildings and structures unfit for habitation, uh, people. Who uh permit such a a structure to exist or. Or occupy those are are deemed guilty of maintaining a nuisance. Uh, the accumulation of garbage, vehicles, awful weeds, debris, um, inoperative motors. Um, these again are recognized in our code as being public nuisances. Uh, item D there near the bottom of the slide, violations of code NRS four eighty seven two ninety. Uh, that addresses two unregistered vehicles being the the limit for most properties, there are some exceptions for that. Um, and then any land use violation is is identified in title ten, uh, this is a typo that we will be fixing. It's a reference to our development code title fifteen. Um, so that's a kind of an important one, that that's where we can. We have the authority to issue a violation for someone lacking the proper zoning entitlement, for instance. Or conducting and operating a a land use that's not consistent with someone. I'm now gonna kind of just attempt to to summarize our current process, there's a number of slides that look like this, but this is the first one. Um, we've already, you know, mentioned how violations occur. Um, and then we move over to our our code enforcement officer issuing that that letter. A thirty day notice of violation, request a a response. And um then work on a a compliance schedule i- if we get that response. And that does happen quite a bit, I mean, I I think right now, we're all here today because of that that small percentage of cases that aren't resolved. Uh, but this is our typical process, we do get responses and we do have arrangements and agreements in place and we get places cleaned up. So that's where we get right to response and agreement, no fines, no further action, just take, sometimes takes a little time and a little discretion. Uh, unfortunately, we have all of the 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 items with no action, um, that calls to all of our our headaches. Uh, we send follow up letters now, and this is where I said earlier, we're sort of in in a loop here. Where we get stuck in that bottom left corner, uh, sending follow up letters, maybe putting a little more um. Stronger language in there, uh, we we picked up a a new format. From the district attorney's office, so we can threaten turning them over to the DA, sometimes it does get people's attention, um, and then. If that occurs, we get that good response, we get someone agreeing to to work with us, and then we can move over to that top right where we have response and agreements. When we have no action or bad response, we have people who take umbrage to receiving a letter from code enforcement. Um, they read a little bit too much into what we're accusing them of, we get accused of being trespassers and much worse. Officer Johnson ensures we called worse, and. Then we have to start thinking about elevating these complaints, and that's when we're talking about. In that bottom right box there about referring items to the district attorney's office. To to turn these into criminal cases. Uh, sometimes the records are deemed to not be appropriate for the court. And now that's when we're in a bad spot, that's where I think we can certainly improve our process and use better codes and ordinances. Um, to to give us a better administrative process. Um, and then going to the court, sometimes the outcome is uncertain, right, if that record's not intact or somehow that they. Get an attorney and make some sort of um case to the judge, the judge is now making a decision as opposed to to staff. Um, we can refer items to the to sheriff's office, again, as previously mentioned, if if there's drugs or illegal activity or abuse. Uh, we're gonna contact Commander Powell immediately, um, but when it's later on in the process. Uh, we're handing over i- items that again weren't designed, a record that wasn't designed to be handed to the sheriffs. So sometimes we don't always get all the the co-compliance. Resolution we're seeking, because of course, sheriffs have higher priorities, more focused on the criminal element. There there are statutes already in place, uh, since I've been here, I don't recall an item being elevated to the Board of Commissioners. Um, but the board with the district attorney's input can formally declare a property a nuisance. Um, and can use existing code uh for the cleanup of a property. The abatement of a property, even the the acquisition of the property. But that is not an ideal situation, right, if we're looking at a site like this, it's likely going to cost quite a bit to clean it up, in most cases. It's a burned structure or a structure covered with with junk and debris, um, it's very expensive. And it's not always the most appropriate way to um obtain code resolution, right, that that's what we're trying to do, we're not trying to become landlords here. So, uh, any questions about that for you?
Questions? Nope.
I guess, Chairman.
Sorry, I thank you, Chairman Hockady, I guess so. Is there something we can do in that lower left to help out today?
Well, I I do have some suggestions for um a a process the staff's come up with. So, um, I I suppose you could sign off, endorse, or make recommendations on that. Uh, some of the identify, oh, sorry, sir, sorry.
Is there a process um for deciding which one should come before us?
Again, I haven't gone through it, the district attorney's gonna make some judgments. Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, so usually for some of these bad ones, we've um sit down and could discuss it.
We do have one that we're um exploring the idea of bringing before the board here before the end of the year. And you know, we we've had those discussions. Um, but most of the time it's a conversation between myself, Lewis, and um the district attorney's office to determine what's best. A lot of times with some of these these properties that are are really bad, um it's gonna cost more for the county to clean it up. Then it would um than we would get from. You know, we're pooping that if it it let's just say they never paid the county back, right? That's kind of the requirements, then it essentially um. The property gets leaned and then it would eventually go to a sale, but that sale wouldn't happen for at least three years. That gives whoever it is three years to mess it up again, honestly. So it becomes a challenge.
I just wondered if there was a specific criteria that, you know, to kind of cover us. So that if there's ever the question, well, you did this with this property, but not with this, you know what I mean? I wondered if we had a s- a set standard for that.
Gotcha. Yeah, so I mean, there's a few different factors that we take a look at. Honestly, that the value of that property and whether or not we could recoup the cost is a big part of it.
Okay.
Just as you are aware, we don't we don't have a budget line item for property cleanup. And so um yeah, that that has to be something that we we take into consideration.
Go ahead.
Uh, so moving on to some of our uh current process and identified challenges. Uh, this slide, the next slide, the bottom, we do have uh some small recommendations or comments from the staff. Uh, the first is uh. Is an item in title six uh that authorizes the specific staff and the district attorney. As having the authority uh to issue a citation. So this will be the district attorney, code enforcement officer, and any other officer designated by the Board of County Commission. Uh, is authorized and empowered to determine the existence of a public nuisance, you know, as previously defined. Um, and then serve criminal misdemeanor citations for public nuisance violations. Staff's recommendation here, and I and I have discussed this with Commander Powell, is is adding language that I think used to be in title ten. Um, that authorized more clearly the sheriff's office to issue. Something analogous just to a ticket or misdemeanor violation, something a little cleaner than the process we have now. Wherein a violation, a code enforcement violation would permit the sheriff's office to go out and ticket a property. We have a couple ongoing cases that would make that a lot easier for us instead of it having to be elevated to some kind of criminal. Criminal matter, we can just use uh the existing code to authorize that. I'm not sure if Commander Powell have misstated anything there. If anything to add, thank you, sir. Uh, so staff is recommending as part of an amendment that we more clearly define uh who has those authorities. Um, in other jurisdictions and researching other jurisdictions and having personally worked in other jurisdictions. Um, sometimes a building official is the authority for issuing some of these violations. Um, or the community development director, not necessarily volunteering for this, but I understand this is part of the process.
Thank you, uh Chairman Hockley. Um, I guess. I'm guessing police officers aren't are looking for. Other things when they're um on duty or whatever. Is this something we should involve like the? Fire chief on, could he, does he have input on this? Cause he might have a trained eye for fire danger. Or they might be in the house doing a um. Doing a welfare or health check or responding to a medical emergency and noticing something. Do they have authority to report that? Are they involved? Cause I know it was just brought up, the fire hazard uh by a gentleman um. And uh, I'm sure of our officer, police officers aren't out really looking at at that sort of stuff, so. Is the fire chief and their crew involved in this?
Yes, sir. We do um coordinate with them. We receive complaints from them. Um, they've identified a couple cases. Uh, where structures were unsuitable for habitation. Um, they've also assisted with. Um, even those zoning entitlement issues where they're doing inspections potentially for. Uh, a business license and then find that the use is much more expansive than described. Um, and call us up and say, hey, you know, do they have, do they need a C and P? So we do coordinate with them in other jurisdictions where the fire department is under the larger umbrella of the county or the or a city. Um, it's a little easier to coordinate and drag them in, not drag, that's a wrong term, but make them part of the term. Uh, a part of the code amendments because they'd be working under the same codes. Since they are independent entities, we coordinate. Um, but I couldn't formally speak for them in changing their process. We absolutely work with them.
Citation authority. I know Churchill does.
I know in the past that uh this particular issue did come before the. Board of Commissioners, I don't think anybody on this board, but uh they asked for authority for the for the fire marshal and I got turned down. And you, I don't know what it was, but I know uh. As far as the, under nuisances, you have weeds. Right? So if it could be ticketed right now, all of Lyon County, basically. And I think it could be a uh abused in a in a certain certain way, so. That's kind of a slipper slope for me too, as far as if there are certain things that were identified that could be. Uh, raises it to a violation compared because it was all lumped in one thing in our code. And so maybe uh like cars or something like that might be separated out that could warrant a violation that. We could take it. So to me, it was too broad.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager, that's definitely something that we can take a look at and that's maybe um why we. Wanted to have this workshop so that we could have this discussion. Um, as far as you 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 already touched on it, the the board had considered that in the past. Uh, because of fire protection districts are separate entities from Lyon County, we would want to be pretty careful about giving them authority to. Go in ahead and issue tickets on behalf of Lyon County that get us into trouble, but coordinating with them um is certainly appropriate.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson has his hand up.
One one other thing that if I can add real quick to that is that um because they are acting, the fire protection districts are acting on behalf of the. State Fire Marshal on the way that they are formed. Um, they do have their own set of of rules and things that they can enforce.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just kind of curious about how adding the sheriff and the deputy in there would work for ticketing authority. Would they only be authorized to issue tickets when referred by community development? Or are we turning all of our deputies into code enforcement officers?
Uh, thank you for that question, Commissioner Henderson. Um, the intent would be in concert uh with code enforcement. Where we have been ineffective administratively uh obtaining resolution. So we're not, we're not in any way expecting the sheriffs to take on all their real responsibilities in addition to junk in the front yard.
Yeah, well, I I like to make sure there's language. When you come back with with actual amendments, language that specifies that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions? Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, and I think really tie that into the DA's office because a ticket isn't worth anything if the DA isn't gonna. Be able to move it forward and uh we don't want to overwhelm his department with uh just tickets.
Not turn the DA's office into a ticket turnstile.
But.
Commissioner Jacobson.
With any change, you're gonna have a spike. And it's gonna be a little chaotic for a while, and then the intent would be is that it's gonna drop that so that. In the long run. In the long run, people are aware that this is gonna happen and there are, there is some teeth behind this. Um, I can only imagine how frustrating it is for people seeing people living in a red tagged house, so. There's gonna be a spike when if we if we make meaningful change, I think there's gonna, just that total change process, there's gonna be a spike. There's no doubt about it.
I'd have to agree with that. I I but that's where I was getting back to what what is gonna be ticketed, maybe the. The cars or maybe, you know, we get a priority test uh list of what the DA can handle. So in concert with them and get the main things, and I think uh out in my area, the the biggest one I I see is people living. In structures or bubble homes. Uh, motorhomes that wasn't, they're not supposed to be there, and to me, that one definitely needs to have some teeth in it.
Oh, that that precisely serves what I spoke to Commander Powell about. Those types of issues are the ones that. We we would very much like the ability to do that.
Get my exercise today. Andrew Haskin, um for the record. Um, you know, one of the things, I mean, we we have no desire to become the county's HOA, right? So we're not out to um provide tickets for unnecessary things. We just. One, we don't have the desire, but two, I mean, we would have the manpower even if we did to to do that kind of thing, so it's really gonna be um. A situation where we're we're using a lot of discretion on which ones.
Thank you.
Hey, Louis Carriola, um, the bottom item here kind of. Uh, shows my hand on some of the staff recommendations coming up. So fines and penalties, should they be enumerated? And should they escalate to a lien on the property? So. Okay, if you want to play poker right now is when you know what I have. So one of the last uh current code challenge, or this is the last current code challenge slide. It was already identified here by Commissioner Keller, living in an RV without a current building permit uh for a new single family residence. Uh, currently in code, our allowance for living in an RV uh on a residential zone property is that one. Already holds a valid permit for construction of their residence. So it's entirely reasonable for someone to want to look after their property as it's under construction. We have this issue more often than than um than we should. Uh, I think it's just a reality again of living in such a rural place, so this is a big issue. Uh, requests for turning on electric on a site without a current building permit or a permitted structure. Uh, County Manager Haskin, when he was was in my post as uh Community Development Director, dealt with this building apartment quite a bit. Um, people make this request often. Um, we end up turning them down often. Uh, because we know essentially that's just gonna become where they live in their RV and then they're gonna put up a shed. And now we've created uh a locale for habitation that is in violation of our code. So we'd like the uh opportunity in a code update to kind of more clearly state. Some of uh these issues right now are sort of referred to or broadly um addressed. As opposed to just a more clear bullet point so that if Officer Johnson or the sheriff's office needs to point to a code section, they can just point that to. Uh, and then fines and penalties, they're not currently defined at all um or outlined. In our in our code, um nor is there uh an outlined administrative process. Uh, for hearings or appeals of code enforcement issues. Essentially, we'd be looking at. Um, introducing a process by which we could handle some of these code enforcement issues administratively as opposed to elevating to the sheriff's. Um, DA's office or the Board of Commissioners. So here's a, just a repeat of that that current process slide. Uh, recall the three items we were talking about, DA's office, sheriff's office, or the the B O C C. Are really all the code provides for now if staff has been unable uh to attain an administrative resolution. Uh, so now I've got four slides with recommended changes. The the first few items, the violation reporting, the the sending of the letter. And then for no action, uh portion of the slide and process are still the same. But now when we get to that bottom left, that second final notice where I mentioned before, we're just kind of stuck in that loop of sending letters. We're proposing and working with the DA's office, we have the format for a letter that would threat, well, we don't quite have this format yet. Um, that would threaten fines and then eventual lien against the property. This would be. Uh, our new fourth option administrative assignment of civil penalties. Um, this second notice would say, hey, look, you've got ten days to respond, but we're going to start assigning penalties. So if we've moved to the bottom right here of this slide, no action or bad response. Now, through code, uh this is the suggestion. That the community development director or the DA um sheriff board, well, okay, that was the first, uh, I'm sorry. That was our initial three. Our fourth option now would be through code. Um, assignment of civil penalties and the amount of fifty dollars per day per offense. For residential properties of one hundred and fifty or non-residential. Um, the intent here is to get an owner's attention and to now have some teeth right out of code. Instead of us exercising discretion and trying to work with property owners who are not responsive, who seem to have no intention of actually. Um, following through, sometimes they they tell us they're going to, of course, and they don't. Um, here we'd start assigning penalties essentially after that thirty day notice and then the ten day notice, so. In reality, we receive a response, maybe Michael goes out and takes him a week to verify and send that letter out. Uh, then they get a thirty day letter. Okay, thirty days they haven't responded, we send another ten day letter. I mean, at this point, realistically, we're talking fifty to sixty days. Since the complaint before we would be at this um assignment of civil penalties. Um, these numbers of fifty dollars a day and one for residential properties and one fifty for non-residential. Are actually lower than some neighboring jurisdictions. Um, I know we don't want to be Douglas County. Their numbers are much higher, like two fifty a day for residential, seven fifty for for commercial. Um, we did think that might be excessive. Uh, again, our goal is not to start taking properties, signing penalties. Um, and dragging these items to court, um but we want to get owners' attention with real consequence if they don't respond. That's not.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson had his hand up.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just questions about the fines. Is there gonna be? Are you envisioning a process where a property owner could appeal to fine? Or is there also gonna be a process to um? Um, waive the fine in case of, you know, somebody doesn't have money. There you go. They're broke, you know, like you said earlier, they got they got a violation, it takes time and money to clean it up, and then we're gonna. Throw a a fine on top of that. So two questions, is there gonna be an appeal process and is there gonna be a method to waive the the fines?
Uh, thank you for those questions. Yes, sir, there are. Yes to both questions, and they are coming up in the next two slides.
Thank you. I will hold my further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hockley. Um. I guess so, this letter would be sent if they're renting. It would be sent to the owner of the property, not the renter, because they're probably just throwing it in file thirteen, right?
Yes, sir. But he does.
Okay, if I was writing to you because the owner, but he's the renter, I write to you because you're the owner, but I write to the manager, but I didn't have that yet. But so they're aware that the owner got the letter.
Thank you.
And we would continue to do that.
My my question is, will the first letter contain, show information? Basically, if you don't comply within this time, this is what's next so that. So that they have basically that much notice, because it can take some time for them to take care of whatever the issue is. Only having ten days is not much time, whether if we tell them upfront. That if you don't comply within thirty days, this is what's next.
I I don't think we've gotten to that point in drafting, but we absolutely can do that. And then additionally, it wouldn't be the assessment of the fines after ten days. It's if 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 they contacted Michael. And made an agreement and then they demonstrate that they're working towards a resolution, we wouldn't assess the fines.
That initial first letter that the DA created, it's thirty days to start getting action, but fourteen days to contact me. She's telling me you got the letter and they'll start working on it, and basically that's all we're asking for, but. If you don't respond after thirty days, it could be turned over to the DA. Typically, we send the second letter. Kind of in the same base. He's saying that at that point, he's talking about a ten day letter, so now they've had. Probably fifty days since the first letter went out before they did, and they haven't responded is really the problem.
Uh, I I like the recommendation. We can certainly add the language to the thirty day letter as well.
Cause right now people are used to nothing happening.
Right.
If they just ignore the letter and suddenly now they're gonna let her get, gonna get another letter that they're not expecting. To have any ramifications.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I I get phone calls uh about that letter and and it seems to me the people that. And and it seems to me the people that really want to do something good, they're the wor- they're the ones that are worried the most. I mean, they're the ones that call, what do we do? Everything else? I say, hey, settle down. Call the office, yeah, and 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 get it taken care of. It's the ones that throw it away that they care less. So I get those phone calls from that letter, so.
You've seen the letter.
No, I get phone calls, not the letter. I don't get the letter. I just get, hey, what do I do? I'm panicky. And so it it does do stuff. I'll wait and tell the next two slides.
Commissioner Jacobson, anything?
Yeah, so just to to pick up on on what Commissioner Keller just mentioned, you know, if if the response to that second final notice letter is a good response, and I think this would address what what you were concerned with Commissioner Hendricks. Um we can go right to that top right response and agreements. We're again, we're not trying to to assess fines, and we're trying to get owners' attention. So we can move forward. So um the last thing uh that would be part of this new or the suggested or recommended administrative um penalty structure would be a five thousand dollar limit. Um this is something that would for a residential property represent one hundred days of non-compliance. Um about thirty-four days for non-residential compliance. We're talking about assigning a lien to the property title when they hit five thousand dollars. Um this is really to get someone's attention that, you know, we're not just sending you a a letter that says we're going to assign a bunch of fines. Now, as uh you know, Commissioner Hen- Henderson had asked about um opportunities to change where these lands and and if there's hearing process. So I do have that coming up in the in the forward slides. So maybe I should get to those before we we keep discussing the lien. Uh but the point would be, we we can't just assess these fines forever. There has to be a a cutoff date at which there's a next step. Um so we'd be moving here to this next step. Uh it once we started assigning fines, even if we didn't get to that five thousand, say it's just ten days, right? So you know, now we've got five hundred dollars for a residential um assigned at fifty dollars a day. If these folks, these property owners actually respond to code enforcement and community development, and they agree to work with us, um this would be where staff would have the discretion to reduce the fines to what has yet to be established as some sort of administrative minimum. In other words, we've spent a bunch of time on this. We're not going to make all five hundred go away. I don't know what the number would be. Let's just say it was two fifty. Um and you agree with with Officer Johnson that, look, I'm gonna address the two cars first, and then I'm gonna take care of the garbage, and then I'm gonna do the weeds. And then Officer Johnson rolls through next week through your neighborhood, and there it is. You're moving forward. You send an email. Um send a picture every month. I mean, there's a number of ways to demonstrate this compliance. Um staff would have discretion without any further hearings or or formal process to reduce the fines down to an administrative minimum. Alternatively, uh we are suggesting a hearings officer for an appeal. So this is the the item that Commissioner Henderson, looks like he's got his hand up again, um mentioned earlier as an option. Uh we're looking at the at this point, the Community Development Director, the County Manager, again, we're trying to keep this administratively sort of in-house without moving towards a district attorney's office uh to have an appeal of the fines as assessed. And to present new information, this is the opportunity for someone to say, hey, look, uh I have this going on in my life, and for that reason, I don't feel these fines are necessary or appropriate. That you know, that process could occur still in that that middle box in in working with staff without actually having um a request for the for the appeal or making the appeal. But if folks felt they weren't being fairly treated, that's where the appeal would come in. Um and at that point, uh we could uh determine a a reduction in fines to some sort of percentage based on new information. So that would be the hearings process, or the appeal process. There is still another step. So I'm not sure if Commander Commissioner Henderson needs an answer now or for the next slide.
I'll let him uh ask this question. Go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I hope this is on the next slide, but if the if the uh if if the person is getting assessed these fines, request a hearing and goes through the process and they're not satisfied with the hearing officer's decision, is there a provision for them to appeal that to the Board of County Commissioners?
Yes, sir, there is.
Thank you.
Ah you teed that one right up for me.
I sure did.
So here we are in process recommendation. Um slide three of four. Were the uh appellant not satisfied with the ruling from the hearings officer? And and that's easy to imagine, right? Staff has already made some decisions by the time of getting there. Um really, the the hearings, the appeal hearings um are envisioned to be an opportunity for someone to say or to offer new information. So some kind of family tragedy, some reason for they were out of the country. I mean, there there are many valid reasons to imagine uh for why we should drop those fines. Um at that point, that's where if the hearings, if the appeal with the hearings officer was not um judged to be to the satisfaction of the appellant, they could appeal the judgment to the Board of County Commissioners. Um it would be sort of analogous to what now can be elevated to you already. But in this case, there would have been a couple steps added to this process before they came to you. Um there would also, of course, then be a a tighter, cleaner, and more defined record of the county's administrative attempts at uh code enforcement resolution. So at that point, the the Board of Commissioners, of course, under your purview, would determine if the the reduction in fines is warranted. Um you could set a compliance schedule, you can make a judgment. Um I'd have to work still with the District Attorney's Office um on the lien structure. So I I haven't really talked about that, kind of jumped ahead here. Um but the intent at that five thousand dollars leaned against the property, that wouldn't stop the penalties from accruing. That would just be the threshold from which we would, I think that the the intention now would be to record a lien uh with with the Recorder's Office, Ms. Talbot is here today. Against the title on the property. And in that way, anyone looking to purchase property, sell the property, et cetera, that would be that bonus. Um I I'm not clear yet on the process and whether or not that lien would be something the the board would have the authority to remove. Um so that's that's yet to be determined. I apologize if I don't know if it's not fair maybe to ask the district attorney to answer that yet.
Commissioner Keller. Oh, Commissioner Hendricks.
I I see in the appeal process, they you we have the able, you have the ability to reduce the fines to a certain level. Will there be a provision to waive the fees if there is a case that actually warrants that?
I I I we don't have all of this outlined, which is, I guess, kind of the the focus of this workshop. So um I think we probably, we absolutely should have something there. Uh you know, the 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 intent of having with that compliance schedule, just like a minimum administrative fee. I suppose we probably should demonstrate some compassion if there's really some sort of event um where in which it wasn't reasonable to expect someone to respond. Maybe we can add a provision maybe to to eliminate or reduce. That would be the kind of language, something like that.
It'll be uh when the public has chance to uh discuss some. Uh Commissioner Keller.
So one thing I wanted to, you're you're getting these lanes against the properties and stuff. Uh a lot of times, you know, it's not, the property itself isn't worth very much. It ends up that way because they they squat out in the middle of the desert. There's no service, no well, there's no septic. There's, you know, they throw garbage out because they don't want to have trash service. That's just one more thing to bring attention that they're out there. And I know down in the uh clerk treasurer's office, they've had trouble getting rid of properties because of over time not making, paying on stuff, they it increases the value, the penalties and everything else to the point where it sits on our on our books for a while. Uh so I'd like to make sure we definitely can get rid of those when it comes time to it, you know, not to the same family owner or whatever, but you know, somewhere to where somebody can get in and and do something with the property if it does get recovered.
Andrew Haskin for the record. Um yeah, so that was why that threshold was set, kind of a lower number of five thousand. Um one to give the op- give the property owner an opportunity to pay that if it was much higher, that could be. I mean, five thousand is still still a significant amount, but uh we don't want to make it so that it's impossible to to pay that, that should go that direction. But two, um that would have implications for setting the minimum was, you know, if it were to be sold at a later date, if it came to that. Due to the.
I'll follow up on that.
Commissioner Keller, then it'll be Commissioner Jacobson, then Commissioner Henderson.
So where I was going with that is because if you don't pay taxes, if if it requires a cleanup from the county, now we're paying county employees to clean it up. Uh and there was already the fines on there. So by adding them all up is what I was trying to get at, is that we could definitely make it to where it's worth way too much money.
But we probably wouldn't, the county probably wouldn't go and clean it up then at that point before a sale if it came to that. Uh well, we've had si- situations with other properties and and that were code enforcement violations that sold due to a tax sale due to not paying their taxes. And uh the new owner has gone in and cleaned it up. So that would kind of be.
Well, it takes the period of three years. That's what I heard, three years. But that doesn't mean it actually is going up for tax sale at that year. It could be another year or two for the tax sale. So five years, that could be a lot of money. So.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I might have my head in the sand, but are there any properties in Lyon County for five thousand dollars? There's gotta be. I mean, the property value, I mean, I don't.
I don't, I don't have an answer for you directly on that. Um I from what I've seen, I I haven't seen anything that low, but I we'd have to.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a process question. Once once a lien has been assessed, do the fines continue to accumulate?
Louis Carrillo, yeah, the intent is to let the fines still accumulate, but um as you'll see here in the coming slides, uh if if items got to the Board of Commissioners, um I think we would give the board the authority to reduce the additional fines. The lien, I think, is what still would be standing. Um again, we haven't worked out those details with District Attorney's Office. Um the lien would sort of be its own independent figure. Um and as Commissioner Keller mentioned, you know, it should be within the purview of the board to reduce the lien as well. But I think that would kind of be, you know, a situation, and and again, it is on my my last slide here uh for no action, if an item gets to the board, that you would remove the fines and then remove the lien. Because a lien would, as we're envisioning it, would have been a recorded documents. We'd have to re-record to remove it.
Yeah, I I get that, but if the if the fines continue to accumulate, wouldn't there at some point in time, wouldn't you want to go and increase the amount of of the lien?
Yes, uh yeah, I mean, I it we haven't outlined this code. I mean, we could start in putting them at increments of five thousand. Um you know, again, we did do research on neighboring jurisdictions and tried to be reasonable as to what is 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 appropriate for Lyon County as opposed to other counties, not to keep using Douglas as an example, but I will again. Um having worked for them as well, uh but it's twenty-five thousand dollars there, but of course, their daily fines are much higher. Um and that does create the sort of barrier for future sale of the property if that number is so high. Uh but yeah, we can absolutely discuss, you know, ideas for how that that lien would be assessed if it's um if all the fines turn into a lien at the time of, you know, now we're going to to the board for the appeal, which again, I haven't gotten to the slide yet, but um we we could turn the whole thing into a lien or have those increments. I'm I'm not sure what that'll look like.
Yeah, and then then just another comment, yeah, the the five thousand dollars, as you said, represents a hundred days for residential. So for non-residential, why would it be fifteen thousand to give them the same hundred days?
I I don't think that's a terrible idea, sir. But I'm happy to make that change.
Uh tha- thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh Commissioner Jacobson.
That thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I agree with Commissioner Henderson on that. It should, let's jack that up to fifteen grand. Um and then um my other point, um I see this as a, the hearings or the appeal or whatever is a chance for us to show support of the code enforcement. And so uh rather than stacking people in here, giving us a sob story on why it took over a hundred days to clean something up, I'm gonna be, it would take an incredible story for me not to for me to vote to give uh someone a break on something on s- on a piece of property that they've had this long, this much notice to get taken care of. So I see this as an opportunity to support code enforcement and our DA's office. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Hendricks, anything? Uh Commissioner Keller.
I'd have to agree with that, and it goes back the other way, too. Give him every chance he can, solve the problem so it doesn't come to us. And if you guys do all that, then that makes our decisions a little bit easier.
Uh yeah, and with that, I agree, but then the other side of it, you get frustrated residents that it seems like it's taking forever. So the process does need to keep moving along. Especially if the if the people are obviously in the wrong and and they're filth or whatever, so I think we've got both sides. We're we're seem to be talking about a lot about the the property owner and the fact that we're giving them all this time, all these chances, but then there's also the other people that are having to be neighbors to this problem that just that frustration cycle continues there. So I think we've, while we continue to talk about the property owner that the junk is on, and junk could be whatever, but we also need to consider the other residents of Lyon County and make sure that we're doing right by them.
Yeah, my comment would be that we're really not looking at people at, oh, jeez, it's been forty-five days and I haven't got anything done. It's been years for many of these properties. And they're a mess, and the health and safety is an issue. And also, when you have the health and safety of the issue of the uh the people that are living there, uh normally, now you have law enforcement involved because there's other things that are happening on that property, and that's why they're not taking the time to clean it up because they're too busy peddling drugs or uh creating other nuisances. Uh many of the problems that I've been uh notified of the whole neighborhood is messed up because of one specific resident, the people causing problems for everybody, because everybody's turning them in for having these problems. So I look at this as a very fair way of giving people plenty of notice and plenty of time to fix their problems. And financially, it's gonna hurt uh whoever is not cleaning up the property or taking care of business.
Mr. Chair.
Uh Commissioner Hendricks.
I I just wanted to say thank you for doing this. I know it's taken a long, long time and a lot of work for you guys to come up with this, but this is really probably the biggest complaint I ever get consistently. And I just appreciate you guys taking action.
Yeah, and we're not looking to, this isn't something, oh, we want to make money for the county. No, we're trying to take care of the citizens who have filed complaints because their neighborhoods are being trashed out. And it's just causing problem after problem after problem and for years and years and years. Uh it's why, that's why we're here today. We've got to put a stop to it.
Okay, uh thank you for those comments and compliments. Uh I did want to stress here, you know, even after we've sent the the notice of fines, and even when once fines have started to to collect, there that middle, that that middle slide is still representative of where uh or the middle box there, representative of how one of these property owners having um received these threatening notices, recognizing that fines are being assessed, they go, oh, shoot, I better address this now. We still are going to give them an opportunity here. Um so we we will give them fair notice. Um and there is a chance for them to just clean it up before they get to the board. And thank you, Commissioner Jacobson, for saying you would be harsh on them because these boxes are all in red for a reason. It's supposed to represent urgency and the fact that people have ignored us despite the fact that we've hit this lien threshold, that we're 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 sending letters over and over again. We've recorded documents against the title of the property. This is where we did introduce this larger number of uh twenty-five thousand as a suggestion. Again, this is, these are all sort of suggestions that we can move. Um but at that point, uh we are suggesting, at least in as it's currently drafted here, um that the Community Development Director, the County Manager would be bringing Um, that the Community Development Director, the County Manager would be bringing these items once they hit that twenty five thousand dollar lien total. Um, to the Board of Commissioners for your, for your hearing. Um, and that's where, uh, we would be looking at potentially public monies for the cleanup of the property. Um, the private contractor, public crews, we already know the answer as the County Managers mentioned, we, we don't have staff for that. Um, it's not in our budget. So this is something that would, would certainly still need to be, um, kind of fleshed out. In code and ordinance. We don't have those answers yet. Um, these are just suggestions, but we, we do need to have these, these thresholds at which things are advanced. Or this case is advanced to the point of taking the property and cleaning it up. So I'm not sure what that number would look like. It's certainly something we're ready to keep working.
Any further questions?
It looks like Commissioner Henderson has his hand up.
Oh, yep, there he is again. Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a comment on this. Um, yeah, the, the twenty five thousand dollar total. I recommend that be for residential and it'd be seventy five thousand for non-residential.
And looks like Mr. Corio, Coriolis, uh, writing that down.
Yeah.
Uh, tha- thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I think that's our last slide, so you probably don't have any more questions for the next slide.
Well, I did want, I have questions here, but I did.
Don't, don't count me out, Mr. Chair.
I, again, I, we keep saying this, but we do want to stress, our, our goal is compliance with code. We're, we're not trying to be the HOA, we're not trying to, to be a landlord. Um, we're not trying to violate people's property rights. So, um, that is the final slide and of course I'm available for questions. Maybe I.
Any further questions from commissioners?
I don't know, unless we're gonna pull up some of the code. We had the code enforcement form question, maybe.
Yeah, pull up that form for Commissioner Keller, uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
I would just like to, for us to move to maybe public participation. I know we had a lady.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, let's go ahead and take a five minute break and we'll come back to public, uh, comment. So, uh, it's, uh, ten thirty two, let's get back at, uh, ten forty. Take a break. Hey, it is ten forty four, we're gonna. Get back together here and the form. For the complaint, we'll, whenever we get that done, we'll have that, uh, on the board to be seen. So we'll move right along. We've had, uh, plenty of Commissioner comments, um, if we have any more Commissioner comments. Do I have anybody else? Commissioner Henderson, you're good. Right, and we're going to public comment and, uh, since this is workshop, we want to get as much information out as possible. Okay, I see Commissioner Henderson's hand up, but, uh, um, kind of a free flow here, questions will be answered. If you do have a question in public comment, uh, please ask and we will get an answer for that. Uh, this is a no action item for today's agenda. So we will just be basically trying to get as much, much information and questions asked as possible. Uh, so Commissioner Henderson, you have your hand up again?
Uh, yeah, Mr. I, I'm, I just wanna, um, say I, I will have some more comments after the public participation.
Okay. So in-house here, um, yes, ma'am, you may come, yes, please.
If you have public comment here in the chambers, if you wouldn't mind lining up on the side of the room.
My name is Pat Sissukup and I had a question regarding, uh. The fines per day for offense. And I'm wondering is, uh, what if a person has like five different offenses? On one piece of property, that would be, uh. Add up to quite a bit, um, and it would quickly get to the amount of, what was it recommended, five thousand dollars or a thousand? Five hundred for individuals. So how is that telling down? Is it per offense or per property?
Um, Mr. Cariola. Thank you for your questions.
Still getting used to the workshop format. So I, you know, there's a good question. Um, we haven't, of course, uh, outlined this code yet, so. Um, I would think we would exercise the same sort of discretion we do now wherein, um, while there might be multiple offenses. Some are not as serious as others. Um. So. The, the other side of that is, of course, if there are multiple offenses, we do want to get people's attention very quickly. Um, so I would like to imagine that folks like that would immediately get that letter that says they have a lien because they hit that threshold pretty quick. They're going to respond and then we can have an opportunity to drop some of those fines. Um, if you remember, we did suggest the minimum admin fee, um, or some percentage. There was also discussion about potentially eliminating the fines entirely. Um, but I think. If we were in that situation, four or five violations on one property. My personal opinion is that they should hit that lean number quicker, um, because staff has already identified the seriousness of each individual violation. Um, it was discussed previously in the workshop about, you know, weeds, for instance, we could ticket half the properties in certain communities for weeds. Um, but we don't, right? We don't go after things like that. So the intent again here is not to nitpick. Every violation we can find just so we hit that mean number quick. Our intent is to get the more serious violations addressed. Um, so I, I guess, that was a very long answer to say, I believe we would exercise discretion in identifying which ones are serious. Uh, we would leave that number in place, whatever we decide upon, so we hit it sooner. Um, but we would also have the discretion then. Once they respond to, to knock off some of those.
Did you have any further question on that? Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, Jimmy Richards again, uh, first of all, I'd like to say at the moment to thank the council and the code enforcement. As a citizen, I really appreciate you guys taking this matter into consideration because it is. A, a problem in the county. Uh, I know the county manager said that, that there is no property maintenance code. But as they were showing the code on the screen, I did notice weeds and I'm, I'm not talking about just weeds where. You go out and you haven't cut your grass for a week and it, you know, you've been on vacation or something. Excuse me. Within the housing areas, we have lots and half acre lots that weeds are growing six and eight and ten feet tall. I mean, I'm surrounded by empty lots that weeds, you, you can't see your neighbor on the other side because of the weed. And as they start drying out. I think we need to pay attention. Now, I would like to see the fire department get involved in this somehow. I mean, we don't have to give them citation if they're able to fire it. But we should be able to stop and identify properties that are going to be a fire. I don't like to be an alarmist, but we know we could have a Maui situation coming up here this winter when these weeds start drying out. We have a lot of kids on motorbikes out in the old golf course running out there. All it's gonna take is one spark. And one of those motorbikes to set a fire and then we're all gonna be in fire. That's all, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim Danning. Uh, I'd like to know who's responsible for the golf course. My concern is also like Jimmy's, that somebody out there riding dirt bikes, fooling around is gonna spark something. I don't know who's responsible for that county, uh, maintenance. I've seen Perry's Tractors over there. Couple of times I've seen the cities over there cleaning up stuff and, uh. Frankly, you come around the corner and you look down Fairway, it looks like a Christmas tree park. It's ridiculous. Uh, and also for code enforcement. What does code enforcement take into consideration? I was told that it's a three sixty five view all the way around the property. It's offensive. Is code enforcement just working at the front because these people. Uh, that I've talked to seem to think that that's what it is. We're just looking at your front yard. That's all everybody sees. Which is not correct because the guys in back of us over on the other streets and that see all of this. And the other thing is, is that, uh, I think when you hit that thirty day point and write the first letter. There's pictures taken all the way around, three hundred sixty five degrees of that. My other question is, is this place has been red tagged? And it's a code enforcement issue. Is code enforcement allowed to go in and find out what they're doing because there's a lot of. Not permitted underground construction going on in some of these places. I know it's not just the place that I'm talking about, but it's counted wide. And, um, I just, those questions. Thank you. Bye.
Yeah. Um, Louis Cariola, uh, to answer some of Mr. Danning's questions. Uh, as far as the violations, I, I, I'm not aware of any provision that says we're just concerned with the front. So of course violations anywhere on the property are a violation. Now, for the security of Officer Johnson, he's not a peace officer, not a law enforcement officer. Um, so we're not gonna be walking through properties. Um, we're certainly not going to just walk into a red tagged property. Um, that's just not our authority. So, um, I think it's just a matter of, of safety that we're not doing that.
Andrew Haskin, County Manager, specifically a red tagged house, um. You know, if the property owner's not willing to let you in, you would still need. A warrant for that, not that type of investigation, so. That, that's why we don't, uh, we don't typically do that. Now we can, uh. We have the ability to do that, but it, it's a whole other process that we have to go through, through the courts.
Thank you. It looks like the, uh, oh. Mr. Danning, you had, um.
Yes, I. On all these, not all these properties, but the properties that I'm referring to, that I know firsthand about. There are people living in travel trailers, motor homes. Uh, there, I think some of them that are transients are crashing out and out buildings and that. And, uh, there seems to be some hesitation about how to implement the law. About this and get these people out of there. They're walking around through, like I said, late at night, early, early morning. Flashlights in the windows and all of that. And again, uh, I thank you and, uh, appreciate, uh, taking this opportunity.
Thank you. We'll go to, uh, Zoom. I have, uh, uh, Melinda Cash.
Yes, this is Melinda Cash. Can you hear me?
Uh, just barely.
Oh, okay. Uh, I don't know how to fix that problem. Anyhow, I'll try to talk loud.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Johnson for all the work he's done in Mound House. Uh, it shows and we really appreciate it. We have a lot more work in Mound House yet to be done though. Uh, my concerns today are concerning the anonymous, uh, ability to report these items. Uh, is staff aware that we can call and remain anon- anonymous? Usually when I call. I'm referred to a form. I also usually have to give my name and phone number. In my opinion, if I want to stay anonymous, I should not be giving my name or phone number. Because then it becomes a matter of public record, in my opinion. That's, and I think that's legally correct. And, um, you know, I, I don't know how to work around this other than the fact that we really need to make sure. Staff is on board with keeping these things anonymous.
Thank you.
Andrew Haskin, County Manager. So as the District Attorney pointed out, that keeping that anonymous can. Um, create some challenges if it does have to go through the court process, so. Um, and so I, I do want to point that out, um. That's why those forms have that information on there so that we can know who, remember, people are obviously welcome to.
Well, if I had to say anything, Michael Johnson, for the record, I do not tell people who, who complain. But sometimes they can figure it out. Uh, the neighbor's been over complaining to them to clean this up and they haven't. So now all of a sudden they get a thing from code enforcement, they can assume it was you that had called and stuff and sometimes they're, they're sure it was him. Yet I know that it was a woman that called me, you know, type of thing. So, uh, they start sometimes presupposing they know who it was. And sometimes it's not that. It's a, a matter of I've been called out to this street and while I'm out on this street. Well, if I'm gonna come, look at this guy living in a camper, there's like three others right down the street, the same, looks like the same situation. So then in essence, they all get a letter, but yet only the one guy was the one that's complained about, but had I not been on that street, I don't know why I could. Basically target you or something that supposedly you're doing, when it looks like these guys were doing maybe the same thing. So all of a sudden I got four cases on that street, but, uh, but one was maybe complained about.
Commissioner Keller, you had, okay.
The final, the, what the point I was trying to make is that, that, you know, yes, people can keep it anonymous by not filling out the form or by making a phone call. But that might not get the result that you want at the end of the day because we might not, not be able to prosecute it, so. Just want people to be aware.
Well, but wouldn't you say that if an anonymous letter came into the county? And code enforcement went out and looked at it and it was a violation, then it would be acted upon. And we still wouldn't say, well, nobody really told us who they were, so therefore we're not gonna do anything. Yeah, okay.
Um, looks like the District Attorney might have.
Yeah.
Steve Wright, District Attorney. Sorry, I had to leave for a little bit for a court case, but, uh, yeah, the, the identifying the. The reporting or complaining person, sometimes that, that does become an issue, but it doesn't always. Uh, as Michael explained, um, you know, somebody can make a complaint, he can go find other violations. And keep that person anonymous as far as those other violations, because they didn't have anything to do with that. Same if law enforcement's ca- called out, somebody can call in a complaint. Law enforcement can go observe it, see the complaint for themselves. And they can be the complaining party, issue a citation or whatever else. So I think there are ways around that issue. Um, I'll continue to work with Louis and Michael on how we can try to keep people anonymous to the extent possible. I know Churchill County does have that on their website, but I'm sure push comes to shove. Public records requests and things like that, some of that info, let's get yours.
Well, my, my point too is that we're not trying to, you know, tell people to be anonymous, but we are. Kind of let them know that if they make a report anonymously, that it will stay that way unless public records. And if there is anybody attached to that report, then that's as far as that, that could go. So, you know, I just, I want the people to feel comfortable. In making reports so that we at least know where to go to find these issues. Okay, um, like Betty's iPad. Yeah, we're, we'll get through Zoom and then come back.
Okay, I'm, I'm here.
There she goes. You're on.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. One is I've heard you say that you are not an HOA, the county is not an HOA. Does that who complaints would go to if somebody is living in their RV? On a housing development street? Or would that come to the, uh, uh.
So.
Code enforcement officer.
Uh, Louis Cariola, I can answer that question for you. Um, the, the county code enforcement. Uh, regulation would apply within the HOA, but I would recommend you also contact the HOA. Um, a, a dual pronged approach typically more effective. But, um, when we're saying that, I, I think it's a little tongue in cheek. When we're saying that, we, we don't quite mean it literally about being an HOA.
Okay. The other thing I have a question about, we're talking about a lot of things with garbage and, you know. Unsightly, uh, properties and so on. First of all, it's very expensive to have a property cleaned up if you can't do it yourself. Second of all, I'm more concerned about the safety issues of things going on. Uh, I know that complaints have been made about a. Rodeo that's been taking place out in our neighborhood and, um. From what I understand, nothing can or is being done about it. And there's a lot of safety issues. People are, uh, almost getting hit, uh, driving down our roads and, uh. People are, you know, complaining about the treatment of the animals and, um. I just want to make sure that these kinds of things are being looked at too. There's another neighborhood that has a rodeo going on and. They don't have any special use permits. They've been told they don't need them now that it's. They've been told they don't need them now, that it's private property, you can have a rodeo on it if you want to. And I think there's.
Ma'am, we're we're dealing with the code enforcement um issues for property. And uh those would be other issues that are not addressed in this workshop.
Uh okay, I have a problem with that. All right. Thank you. These are code enforcement issues. If it's against the code to have a rodeo in a residential area.
It uh been suggested that uh the Zoom questions, if we could get through and then answer them uh all together at the end rather than individually. So um we'll go on with Mr. Hawkins. Uh yeah, Betty's iPad, if you could state your name for the record so we could get your full name, please.
Eddie Retzer.
And spell that.
R E T Z E R. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Hawkins, and um you're up. Unmute yourself.
How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. What a great forum. Um I'm looking at the numbers here. It's a, it looks like a great workshop uh for the commissioners and the city and and so on and so forth. I really would like to see those of us that are citizens of the Lyon County that really don't care to be anonymous. I mean, we we would be very happy to volunteer and learn how to do the proper procedures on trying to assist in making sure our communities are up to code. Is there any opportunities for workshops, forums, senior center locations, things like this? Because you have so many resources to to report these things. I just don't think a lot of people know that they can, how they could and how they should. Because we only have fourteen participants out of the whole county of Lyon County. So I'm very interested in seeing if in the future, if there's any forums, more workshops, proper procedures on how to assist and enforcing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, uh Mr. Hawkins, your name for the record.
Yes, my name's uh all, I typed it up there as well. Lyon County Magazine Editor in Chief, Mr. Michael Cameron Hawkins. I'm Cameron Hawkins, Cameron with a K. And I'm I'm interested in any workshops, forums, so we can actually bring our community together and try to assist. Because I would like to see also the opportunity to see if something is being enforced. The procedure on how long it goes, it was brought up earlier, if something happened on January two thousand and twenty-two and it actually didn't finish until June of two thousand and twenty-four. We would love to be able to see that timeline and actually make sure these things are actually happening. And that would, that would be very beneficial for all of us living in county, in the county. Thank you very much, everybody.
And I believe his name is in the uh Lyon County Magazine.
It's also, yes, in Lyon County Magazine as editor in in chief, yes. But I'll go ahead and add, I'll go ahead and add the rest of my name to my my information here. Thank you.
And uh back to Melinda Cash.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Melinda Cash again. Uh what I wanted to stress about the anonymous thing is we did have an incident in Mound House where somebody did make an anonymous complaint. Uh the the owners of the property contacted Mr. Johnson to find out who made the complaint. And all he said was it was a woman. And I I wish she hadn't said that, because for those of you who are familiar with me, know I'm one of the few people that are very active in Mound House. And I was instantly, you know, blamed for making this complaint, which of course I didn't. To this day, I still have to deal with that blame. And so, yes, keeping these things anonymous, even to the point of saying it is not a male, it is not a female. Just keeping it completely anonymous is something that needs to be worked on more with staff and everybody else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you are finished, take your hand down from your screen, please. And we're back to the uh chambers. Uh ma'am, I believe you wanted to say something else. You had clarification. You're good?
Ma'am, you'll have to come up to the podium.
Okay, uh yeah, she said she didn't have anything further. All right, Mr. Cariola.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair Louis Cariola. In regards to Mr. Hawkins' comments uh about uh community engagements. You know, once we do get to the point of of redrafting this code, introducing some new process, um I I'm sure we would probably look at that as an appropriate time. Uh maybe for some kind of community engagement or at least some kind of announcement. So I could work, you know, with staff internally, make sure we post something on the website, uh make people aware of the adoption of this, uh these new regulations. And then, of course, I'd also point out that since some of the amendments would be to Title fifteen, um we'd be going through a planning commission hearing before uh two board hearings to to get to the announcement and the, you know, the adoption of those new code regulations. So there will be plenty of uh public noticing regarding the changes to code literally. And then as far as process wise, what that affects. And I think that would be a good time to do some community outreach. So I'm sure we'll follow up.
And the advisory boards will be notified that we'll be moving into that process. And then that can go from the advisory boards to the planning commission to I.
Yes, that's that's a great position to that point. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's see, one more in-house comment here.
Jim, I just like to make a suggestion. We already have a available resource in the county, the VIP program for Sheriff's Office. Looks like we could task them as they drive around doing the the patrols that they do. If they see problems that appear to be outline, out of line with the code, do we propose to code enforcement?
Um Commissioner Keller, I believe you had additional comment? Okay, so District Attorney question here. Oh, okay. All right, nope. Um I'm not sure we can do that one. Not sure we can have a private conversation during a public workshop. Get a ruling on that? From the District Attorney?
I just had a question for the District Attorney about a task force that we had talked about doing back before COVID. And I wanted to bring it up to the to the board and everybody else that I'd like to see in this process. Of I think we called it a task force. I'm not sure what we called it. But it was to get people involved from the DA's office, the uh code enforcement, the sheriffs, members of the uh town board or a local citizen that was aware of the the community, the fire department. And that was to help prioritize some of these issues before it got to your to your department to be prosecuted or anything else and try to solve some of the issues for people that got uh illness, death in the family, uh lost their job or whatever, and to help them move forward to volunteer groups or to use grants appropriately for that thing. And that was more of a in-house uh task force. And I'd like to see that brought back or or done part of this department. So it's not, just not all on Michael's head, that it's where you can meet all at once over each each individual issue. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Steve Ry, District Attorney, I just wanted, uh Commissioner Keller came back and asked me, can he, could he ask about the task force? And then that was the the extent of that question. Uh yeah, the task force, and I'll let Louis and Michael and Andrew speak to that if they want to. It is something that we've discussed. And uh it was at one time, there were some meetings that involved a lot of different members, uh players, federal agencies, state agencies, cities, um just to to try to get ideas and coordination going. And I know that's something we've been doing off and on since then. Uh something that I I believe the county manager is interested in continuing um to identify. And you've heard today that it's not just one agency that deals with code enforcement. It's fire districts, building, community code enforcement, sheriff's office, DA's office, there's a lot of involvement. And so coordinating all those efforts, the cities, the counties, the state agencies, the federal agencies is certainly a benefit to resolving some of these tougher cases. And so I think that's the plan of everybody as far as a formal task force. We have been having some meetings, but we haven't expanded the group yet uh to the point that it was pre-COVID. Did that ask, answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted, because we're talking about code enforcement processes, what the agenda item is. And that's one of the processes that I wanted everybody to to continue on and move forward. So.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's been mentioned today, there is a lot of community involvement, desert pigs. Uh other groups get out, clean up in the desert, they clean up with various places along the rivers, other things. That's all part of that same process, but uh certainly a big help to to Michael and what he has to do.
And I certainly see the the reason behind helping people out that uh may be financially strapped or uh physically unable to take care of their property. And uh it would be a a good idea to have a group that could look into that, say, well, hey, we'll help out. Or we've got a community group that can help them clean up their property, or they haven't got their weeds cut because they're laying in bed for a month. Um I I believe that's a very good effort on behalf of the county and whatever task force you decide to call it. So uh this point, I believe we're done with uh comments. Uh do we have some further Commissioner comments? I see hands on.
I, before you, before you move to that, I totally up to you, but I do have those forms that were requested. I could share those real quick.
Okay, let's go ahead and have Commissioner Henderson, um since he did slip his hand up quickly.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a a couple of comments. I don't think there should be a process for someone to make a complaint anonymously. This is the United States of America. We shouldn't have government taking action against someone because of an anonymous tip. So I would like to see that uh strengthened, that it community development can only act on complaints that have been signed, or they know who it's from. Uh I understand in criminal cases, that might be different, but we're talking code enforcement here. And uh secondly, the letter, the first letters that go out, you know, when you when you notice some type of violation, they should say that the letter was sent out based on a complaint or based on staff observations. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any further Commissioner comments? Uh okay, I see Mr. Cariola back at the uh podium, and you wanted to do some concluding statements?
Uh sure, again, uh Louis Cariola, Community Development Director. Um regarding the uh first letter, uh put it to by Commissioner Henderson. Um currently, we're, we kind of use the process of anonymous versus um staff recognized. Uh the language uses kind of passive terms like concern over such and such violation. I think if Officer Johnson sees items, he can actually take ownership of that reporting. But I think that's an easy amendment to the letter, and even prior to um any kind of code adoption or changes. I think we should implement that um effective immediately um to say a reporting entity or uh staff recognition. Uh as far as uh final comments, again, I I would like to thank the District Attorney, Commander Powell, Officer Johnson, um and the county manager uh for their consult uh preparing this presentation. As previously mentioned, future amendments would, will have to be drafted by staff. We'll have to do some internal processing to get it to a final form uh before we uh then begin the public hearing processes. Uh that would involve, uh again, noticing, as as you mentioned, Chair Hockaday, the advisory board, so they could be aware of these pending code changes, that of course would apply countywide. So they would be appropriate for for a hearing and input from all the for all the the community advisory boards. Uh then the planning commission and introduction to the Board of Commissioners, then the adoptions from the Board of Commissioners and then a couple of weeks of publishing before they would um become part of the the new county code. So we do still have a number of months in front of us, uh but this has been really um really helpful for staff. And I'm hoping that we can really uh be productive moving forward now that we have a little bit more direction. Um I have taken some notes from each of your comments. I will try and compile those as we um just so we kind of have uh our marching orders internally. Uh but I'm of course available uh to any of you. If you have some follow up comments, feel free to just fire off an email to me. Um and we'll make sure that we incorporate that into what will be uh the draft that we bring forward for for internal review. Um I'm also available for any other questions you might have.
Uh Commissioner Keller.
I know I talked to you privately, but I just wondered on the thing I uh about uh the bank repos to address the bank, the banks as far as them having the property and make sure that they comply.
And just for some clarification, sir, and to make sure it's on the record, we, the the intent there is if um if if a bank ends up with a foreclosed property, now they take, they take an ownership um and the uh say the power's been off to a home for, say it's a manufactured home that's a number of years old, that power's been off for for over a year. Uh once the bank owns that property, we're not gonna just say, feel that we can turn on the the electric without adhering to our current codes, regs, hold them to the same standards. Is that correct?
Right, and apply to these fines as far as uh cleaning up. You know, you start finding a property owner, which is the bank, they sell the property, does that go to the new owner, that if it's been leaned?
Should be part of the.
Yeah, so so if it's getting right to that spot. I mean, there there could be complications there. So I just be aware of it.
Yes, sir.
And I also noticed on one of your slides that he only had one car and one phone. So if I give him another phone, you can double it, double that work for two years.
Oh, boy. I think another vehicle like a like a really high truck. Lifted maybe, so he can see in the back of the property.
There you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I just want to thank you and code enforcement and everyone else that participated in um preparing for this and and uh answering questions, taking notes. Um and I'm sure that moving forward, uh you're gonna do a wonderful job. But I just want to thank everybody for for being here and taking their time from the staff. It is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks, anything?
Yeah, I'm good.
And just, we'll make sure we use all channels of communication. And uh we mentioned advisory boards, that would, to me, would be park boards, uh air board, every board we can think of that gets anything um any business done for the county. Uh we we would be, you know, very, very much enlightened by having as many people possible when we get down to the point of getting community input. So that being said, I believe five A is completed. No action will be taken other than Okay. Yeah, I don't see anything else on this, so we'll move on um to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Jacobson. Mr. Keller.
Thank you. I didn't say that earlier, but thank you for the for uh going through this. You guys are on the right step and looking forward to it.
You're good, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I I just want to thank staff too for for this workshop. It's been very beneficial. Uh I especially appreciate the comments that we don't want to be a county HOA. Now, I I live in a neighborhood with HOA, HOA, and I do want to point out, even they don't look in your backyard. But, no, but that's okay. But uh yeah, thank you very much and uh look forward to this. And now it's time to go camping.
And I just say that uh it is true that no, nobody should be looking in your backyard. But if you don't want anybody to see it, then put a big fence around it and then you can pile up all your junk you want. As long as the neighbors don't see it, nobody will ever make a complaint. Okay, the last public participation, no action will be taken on any item unless it's properly agendized. So we have discussed quite a bit here, anticipated the public participation, participation will be held at this time. Uh we're pretty much done with the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but not before the board takes any action. Be before the board takes action. So do I have any final comments, public participation of any type? If not, then we are adjourned at eleven twenty-one. If not, then we are adjourned at eleven twenty-one.